There we go.
Oh, there, that sounds much better. All right, it's Tuesday, May 24th, 2022, 5:30 PM, and I call the meeting of the Finance Committee to order with a quorum of members present. Item number one on the agenda are the minutes of the previous meetings of May 10th, 2022. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes? A motion from Watson, a second from Lukens. Any discussion? I'm not hearing anything. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries. The minutes are approved. Item number two on the agenda, a discussion and possible action regarding ARPA funding request, Community Outreach Specialist Position, WASA. And just a little bit of background on that. We discussed this position in our previous Finance Committee meeting and decided to go through a ranking of the ARPA request. And we got the results for that in front of us this afternoon, so. Any discussion or?
I didn't keep a copy. Just it did rank very strong in the average ranking or composite ranking was 74, which is very high.
Sarah?
I guess I would move to approve this ARPA fund request for the Community Outreach Specialist Position.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, it's a second from Lukens. And I think there was a member of the community that wanted us to speak, so I'll give you that time right now. So if you want to come up to the podium, state your name and address and.
Thank you. My name is Benjamin Erickson, 2702 Merrill Avenue here in Wausau. So thanks for the opportunity to discuss. So I'm in previous Police and Task Force meetings, City Council meetings, I've expressed my support for the position, the Community Outreach Specialist, strongly support it. Today, I mean, I guess you've already voted.
Well, we haven't voted yet.
Okay, all right, all right. So I would ask that you consider voting against the funding using ARPA funds for the position through the Police Department. So on May 16th, it was a Monday, the Public Health and Safety Meeting, the WASA Chief of Police, Ben Bliven, made a presentation to show the community the types of interactions with the police officers are having with the homeless downtown. So if you haven't seen the video, for sure, take a look at it. By no means am I saying that the homeless have the right to scare those coming and going to their jobs downtown, the right to unlawfully loiter or sleep, the right to unlawfully defecate or urinate, nor the right to unlawfully fight or cause a disturbance. So another thing this video shows is their faces. Even more shocking than that, the video shares their first names and some their first and last names. Today, I mean, this is over, well, over a week ago, something that I plays back in my head many times and was pretty shocked and still am that their faces weren't blurred out or their names weren't bleached out of that video. So I just have a question regarding that to Chief Bliven, is why regarding that video? Also, on May 9th, the Human Resources Committee discussed the position. And there was members, if I'm pronouncing this right, Giselman and Killian, expressed concern about this position being under the Police Department. I know that there was wording, after a wording was added, that the position could be moved to another department in the future. That word was adding to that decision, then Killian expressed that he would support it. So again, I would ask that you either decide not to fund this position with ARPA funds or table it for more discussions or send it back to the HR Committee to adjust that wording, either to one, you know, have that position under another department, create a department, I know those were some of the options that I read. And really, it just comes down to a department that really fully understands mental illness and trauma and can really, and case management, and that can really focus on that because it's a huge focus. That, I think that's the only way that, one of the only ways that homelessness is going to be solved in our community regarding that. So, you know, most of the homeless in this community are struggling with that trauma. You know, again, it can cause a struggle with mental health, severe depression, alcoholism and drug abuse, just to name a few. So what is the solution? Is the big question in the end, what is the solution? Rather than just enforcement, 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 what is the solution? So, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. So do we have any other, any other discussion? Watson?
And I guess I liked this for the ARPA funds just mainly because it was sort of bringing it back, so like we would fully fund it for the remainder of the year, but then it would be partially funded through ARPA funds and we would find places for it in the budget, right? And so it would become this permanent thing. And I guess I just looked at the description of what, you know, HR put together for the course, or the Community Outreach Specialist Position. You know, it looks like it's going to take the place of that very effective position that we lost when that officer was reassigned, right? And so I think this seems like it's going to have like one step in the right direction, but you know, it's not going to be a punitive thing, it's going to be something that is going to be able to connect those people to the resources. At least that's what it seemed to me.
Okay. Kara?
From what I've read, also, my understanding is that this was meant to be, it's a non-sworn position and it's meant to be more of a, to offer services, to help. So that was my understanding and, you know, from that standpoint, again, non-punitive, but to also, you know, try to help them and then also deal with the other issues that, you know, are caused by this. That's why I'm in favor of it as well.
Okay, yeah, and to consider the financial aspects of it, I think this is probably a good use of ARPA funding as it's one of those, you know, we like to call, you know, transformational type activities. So even, and it's got, we've worked in a sliding scale so that as we go into years two and three, the city will take on more and more of the burden. So by 2024, when the ARPA funding is done, we should be able to fully absorb that position. All right, any other discussion? Not seeing anything. All those in favor of funding, of the funding request for the Community Outreach Specialist, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Proposed, carries unanimously. Item number three, a discussion and possible action regarding ARPA funding requests, three firefighter positions, Wausau Fire Department. Again, we discussed this at the last Finance Committee meeting and we're going to hope, we were planning to hold off on the actual funding, but it's come back to us again with the, with the hope and the goal of finding a place for it. So I don't know, where should we, do we have to start with the Fire Chief? I see he's on WebEx, so.
Can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Okay. I'm sorry I'm appearing remotely tonight if I had a technology issue. Jeremy Kopp is there, he'd be fully capable of handling this, but this is a very important thing and I wanted to make sure that I was personally involved in it tonight. As you recall, I made a presentation last November and really what we're trying to do, this will be the first hiring increase of operational level firefighters since 1970. And tonight's request is for the first three of the additional 12 firefighters that were approved in the HR Committee in December of 2021. And so for six months, we've been, you know, in the Finance Committee phase of this. Of course, we've submitted a safer grant for the other nine. And I really want to speak to what the first three of these additional 12 firefighters, what that gets us. These three firefighters will put us back to the same staffing level the City of Wausau had in 1970. In 1970, we had three operational crews of 19 firefighters each. Today, we have 18. In 1970, we had achieved the number of 60 total department members. Today, we're at 62. Of course, we've added an administrative staff position and we added a Training Division Chief position two years ago. So at some point in the department's history, they removed three officers from the line crew, the operational side of the operations of our department, and moved them into administrative positions such as EMS Division Chief, the Deputy Chiefs of Positions, and the Fire Marshals Positions. And so really, this funding is long overdue for the fire department in these positions. You know, our workload since 1970, the department is completely different than we were in 1970. We weren't even EMT basics then. Now we're, you know, we're leading the nation at paramedic level. Oftentimes, critical care paramedics serving our community. We're a state hazmat asset. We're not even a reflection of what we were, you know, 52 years ago. And, you know, I apologize that previous chiefs have not brought this forward, but that does not excuse the fact that the community has let the staffing lag in the fire department for years. The internal comparison that we have, the Police Department in 1970 was 55 members strong. Today, they're in the mid 70s, they've had, you know, over a 40% increase. Now, tonight, increased by one more level. And we do not meet the national standards for benchmark staffing. Really, what we're trying to do with the additional 12 firefighters is to put a firefighter in each of the three engine companies throughout the city. And without that, we don't meet any of our ISO ratings, which we're about to go into another cycle where we're going to be evaluated on. We don't meet the NFPA 1710 benchmarks. It's essential that we move this forward and begin funding these positions. We realize that it's quite an increase in the fire department budget. We're asking to use ARPA funds to smooth that over the next few years until we can get to some TID districts that are closing it. I understand the Finance Director and I've had conversations about that that will be the long-term funding for these positions. I think using the ARPA funding is absolutely appropriate, very similar to the new position over at the Police Department, that we're using this to have a positive impact in the community. And I also want to remind everyone that this is COVID relief money and our firefighter paramedics, we're on, you know, taking care of this community at a point of contact care, at great risk to themselves through COVID. We were the ones responding in the patients' homes, into the assisted living homes, the facilities, the nursing homes throughout the pandemic, to provide great, high-quality care. And at the same time, we're still doing it with levels of staffing that we experienced in the 1960s. And so I encourage you to pass this through tonight in order to allow us to, that first phase of the additional 12 firefighters. And we're going to come back and discuss the additional nine. Hopefully, we've got the safer grant announcement coming soon, but if not, we'll have to discuss contingency plans, but at least this gets the first leg of the journey underway. So I encourage you to pass it tonight. Any questions for me?
All right, I see a question from Sarah.
So I guess, what's the difference between the ask from two weeks ago? Do you have three candidates ready to go?
Yeah, so that's a great, thank you, Sarah, for asking that, yeah, and as I put it in the packet. So yesterday, the, so as you recall, when I was there in front of you a couple of weeks ago, we had two open positions and we had, we were interviewing candidates, we offered one position to candidate. We're actually only right now missing one, one position right now. And we're going into our summer recruitment, which, and at least Erasmus had acknowledged at the last meeting, is one of our strongest recruitments because we have all the technical colleges that are releasing their paramedic students, their associate degree students right now in May and June. And so it puts us in a really position of strength to recruit. And so we feel like this is the perfect time. Yesterday, HR opened up the position and it'll be advertised through mid-June. We will be interviewing in a third week of June and then we want to be able to make offers. When I began to look at the logistics of what was brought up last month, it's just to come back when we have a list of people. The problem is that there's only one Finance and Council meeting each month, and so it will take me two months to pass it through Finance and Council. And I would prefer to make offers right away and to hopefully have these people starting sometime in July, at the very latest, you know, the first week of August. But I think that we could potentially be looking at candidates starting in July, maybe August. And so that's the real change is I, at the time, you know, I was kind of shocked with the discussion. Of course, willing to, you know, work in any way I can with the Finance Committee to make this work financially, but we're in a position right now where we hopefully have enough candidates, we can fill these positions over the summer recruitment or at least get part of the way there. I can't fill positions, I can't advertise for positions that are not available to me inside my staffing. So right now, I can only hire one additional, one firefighter, just to get to where we have been since 1970. But having the other three open, I'll need to do that and recruit that and recruit those people, make offers early to be competitive with the other departments that are competing for these candidates, because honestly, right now, candidates have a large selection of different departments that can go to. We really want to be forward leaning into that, making early offers and trying to be aggressive in that sense to recruit a quality workforce for us.
Okay, any other discussion? I know that was something that really stuck out to me in your memo in our packet about summer recruitment coming. And I guess, you know, when we talked, when we talked two weeks ago, you were down two positions and now we're only down one position, but we see the opportunity of the more of those three to come up real quick. I think maybe we do need to be a little bit more forward-thinking. So Sarah?
So financially, like you can only post job announcements for ones that you have fully funded?
Correct.
Can you post, I mean, you can't post and advertise for three knowing that if you did get candidates, that you could come back to Finance and we could call an emergency meeting or something?
That's, that would be a HR question. I think that has been the policy that you can't until the funding is available, but.
I think what might happen is then you're leaving those candidates kind of hanging if the money's going to come or not. And if, if I was looking for a job and it was dependent upon funding, that may weigh into the recruits', you know, decision-making, I would imagine if they would want to move, you know, move to WASA or with the hope of funding or someplace else that has an open position on the payroll. At least that's my interpretation. Anything else? This did score, you know, when we're looking at the other unfunded previously ranked projects, this scored at a 54.75, which is a little bit low, but it's higher than the other unfunded projects that are sitting out there. So it's. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to use ARPA funding for the three firefighter positions. Oh. Yeah, you can go ahead.
Okay. I mean, I was at, I was at the meeting a while ago when you first presented and, I mean, I guess it is, I do think that it's important. You know, it's an important service and so I guess it did, it did score somewhat low, but, so did you say that you have candidates or you filled one of the positions?
We're currently recruiting. So yesterday, the HR Department posted our, what we call our summer recruitment. We kind of target this late May and June time period because it's when the technical colleges are graduating their paramedic students. When we say firefighters, it's a generic term that we're using to describe qualified candidates. And so these candidates have firefighter, state firefighter, too, and they also are either nationally registered or state licensed paramedics. And so, yes, we've done, in this year, we've done very well in our recruitments. We have filled the majority of the positions that we have, have. We currently only have one open position, which allowed us to post so we could fill that one position. And we anticipate more than one candidate coming from this process. And so we would like to have the positions funded as we've been requesting since January and be able to move forward with extending offers this summer to be competitive against other fire departments that are trying to recruit the same candidates because it is a very competitive role. I can't emphasize enough how essential these positions are for us. You know, I encourage you to go back and watch our November 8th presentation that we made. These, our firefighters, our paramedics are extremely busy. The call volume from 1970 to today is so drastically different. Our people are overworked, mandated overtime on a daily basis. This is the life ring that our department needs. I can't encourage you under the strongest enough terms that you have, me as your selected Fire Chief, that these positions are essential for our survival as a department and the community that we serve. These are community needs that we meet on a daily basis. Someone in there, in this community on a daily basis, multiple times a day, 19 times a day on average, someone in our community puts up their hand and says, I need help. Today is the worst day of my life. I have a tragedy, I have a disaster, I have an episode in my life where I've got to call 911 and the Wausau Fire Department arrives and meets that need. And we have a desperate need for staffing. I've explained it over and over and over again. I'm asking for the first three of these additional 12 firefighters to be funded tonight. We have this conduit to use this ARPA funding. I think it's appropriate and I think it is long overdue.
Okay, Sarah?
I guess I have a question, too, about the ask. It's 771,000, correct? Or is it 501,000?
It should be 501 for three because isn't it, isn't it about 100,000 plus benefits per firefighter, paramedic?
Because on the first page of the ask, it says 771, and on the second page in the itemized deduction, it says 501. So the third year, is it just partially funded through ARPA funds then?
Yes, I think.
Where's the remaining funds going to come from?
I believe I originally filled out, if you could look at my original document, I think it said 771 for three and, for two and a half years for three firefighters.
Okay. I think on your back page, there's a typo.
Should it be 300,000 instead of 30?
Yeah.
Is there a way to scaffold it down, sort of similar to how we're doing the Community Outreach?
We absolutely could do that, yep.
And roll it into the budget?
Yeah, and, you know, with this position and the Community Outreach position, I mean, each year when we're going through our budget, if there is opportunity to shift them to the levee sooner versus later, we can certainly evaluate that each year when we're considering the budget. So that definitely would be a consideration.
That's not something we need to make, you know, we wouldn't have to decide that tonight, though, but that's what, but I think, you know, a lot of us would feel better, you know, like with the Community Outreach Specialist, if we can, if that, if in progressive years, we can get more and more of that onto the, under the general budget, so.
I'd be happy to work with the Finance Director for a smoothing process over the next two and a half years.
Okay. Otherwise, if there aren't any other questions, Sarah? Or Kara? Kara, you got to raise it. There, I see you now.
Okay, I was just, I would motion to approve this. I do think it's important. There's just, there's a lot to consider.
Yeah, okay. Motion and, do we have a second?
I guess a second if we can smooth that out over the next three years instead of just the three quarters of a million.
You want to make an amendment or do you want to?
Do we have to, Marion?
I don't think we do.
No.
I can bring it back to the next meeting, you know, what that would look like. Okay.
Okay, so there's been a motion. Nate and seconded it, any other discussion? All right, and then I guess, all those in favor of ARPA funding request for the three firefighter positions, Wausau Fire Department, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? A motion carries. Okay. Thank you, Chief. Thanks for your drop by. Item number four, presentation and related discussion regarding ARPA funding requests to be ranked and evaluated at the next meeting. And in our packet, we had several requests from Public Works and I think there was one or two from Community Development, so. Does anybody have any questions about these particular requests? Do we want to just, I don't, do we want to talk about each request individually or do we want to just kind of lump them all together and then, it sounds like we'll probably rank them for the June 9th?
Yeah, I think it's actually, it's the 14th.
June 14th, yeah, for the June Finance Committee meetings, so.
I'd love to have like a little summarized pitch.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then if any questions come up, we can ask.
So Director Lindman, do you want to start first or?
Where did he go?
He was here.
I know. He'd be kind of hard to hide.
Okay, let's go with. And you had several requests here, so on the.
Yeah, three projects, as far as this is the first request from the department. Would you just like to go through them one at a time to answer questions?
I think, yeah, just sort of like, Sarah, did you want just sort of an executive summary and then we can ask questions or, okay?
Okay. I tried to put some of that in the memo that's in here, but the first one is at the wastewater treatment facility. It's a screening system improvement project, which, this is really where all the wastewater comes into the facility. What happens is we have these large step screens that go from the basement up to top and that screens out all of the large debris that would get caught in our process piping and things like that, that will damage that piping and the processes. So what we'd like to do is we'd like to make improvements to that. We continually have problems with gearbox maintenance. We have to bypass those screens. We, and so this wasn't the initial project for the upgrade, but just due to budget constraints, we pulled, this was one of the projects that we pulled out. The other issue that we have with this portion of the treatment facility is we have an issue with the building is actually coming apart that you've seen in the pictures. And so we've filled that control joint just since I've been here, too, and you can already see that it's coming apart as well. So that building is settling and continues to settle as well. And as that debris comes up and gets put into the waste, the trash bin that we have, what happens is, is how that was built and how that was designed a couple decades ago is that that debris doesn't always get carried up from, from the conveyor and it gets caught in there with the rags and everything else. And then what happens is, is there's too much weight and then our gearbox gets twisted and then we have to rebuild that. And then, again, we have to bypass. So when we bypass, all of that debris goes directly into our digesters. And then when we clean out the digestors, then we end up having to deal with that. So what we'd like to do is to do full upgrades on the screening, which is going to be somewhere around $800,000 project for us to do that.
All right, any questions on this project? Is this something that could be put onto the water utility at all or?
Yeah, it could be a CIP project for us. We could look at doing half there, half ARPA. We could, you know, share those costs. We could break that down for you. Typically, on the wastewater side, you know, our CIP, we, you know, try to split that up. We try to only borrow so much a year on an annual basis. I think it's 1.8, maybe $2 million a year. So this would take up about half of the budget for the year. And so. And so we'd like to at least use some ARPA funds for this, maybe a cost share or something if the 800,000 is a lot. But, but yeah, it's definitely something we could put on the CIP list for the wastewater side.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, should we move on to the ABLE lift station?
Yeah, the ABLE lift station, this is the only stormwater sewer lift station in the city, which is amazing to me because of the size of the city. So it's a good thing. Lift stations are always very expensive. This was built in 1971. There hasn't been any major upgrades to it since. The pumps have been rebuilt over time, a couple different times, both the pump end and the motor side. It's down in a low area. It, you know, as you can see on the map, it's over by like where the Metro Ride facility and, and everything is. We did take a look at wondering if we could eliminate that lift station just by running additional piping, but we can't just because of the elevations and the grades of how the storm sewer is laid throughout the city and where that collects from. What we'd like to do, you can see that a good chunk of the cost for that, the total cost is $800,000. The big chunk of that cost is just the pumps themselves. They're very large pumps. They're both about $140,000 each, and they need to be replaced. They are leaking again. To rebuild them, we did get cost for that, too. It was at least half of the price of buying new ones. But until they get into them, we won't know the full costs of rebuilding both the motor and the pump side of those. And then we also have just some mechanical issues, electrical issues, to, you know, once we start getting into that, bringing things up to code for safety and, and all of our electrical components with that. So it's designed properly. The structure itself is in good shape. We might have to do some, maybe a new lid or something like that on it for access to make it safe, but structurally and volume-wise, it's in, it's in decent shape from that point. The one thing with the city is we don't really have a stormwater budget like we do, and so we have to put these on CIP, and they come directly out of the levee. And so there's not really another avenue for this, but this would be an $800,000 project on CIP for the city if, if this funding isn't used for that. We don't have any other source of funding at this point. All of these projects, there are proposed to be potential funding through the bipartisan infrastructure bill, but this funding will most likely come from the DNR, and they don't have any processes in place to access any money at this point or have any specific amounts that have been given to the state yet. So if you did elect to score this project, if it did score, if you elected and we did find funding in another aspect, we'll continue to do that, and then we would come back to this committee and let you know that we received other funding, and we would request to reduce the amount of ARPA that would be obligated to this project. So that's one option, too.
Okay. Any questions on this project? All right. Should we move on to 17th Avenue, Stewart Avenue to Elm Street reconstruction?
So this, this section gets about 10,000 vehicles a day. That's pretty heavily traveled. The section that we're proposing to replace would be from Stewart to Elm. It's asphalt overlaid over concrete, and we have what we call reflective cracking. You'll notice in the spring and in the fall when things start to freeze, it's a pretty rough ride. It does need to be reconstructed. Another overlay, we would just have the same issues in a couple of years, so. The one thing with this project is we did receive a $400,000 grant from the state through LRIP. We were hoping for more, but that's all that the LRIP committee provided. They set a maximum of $400,000 per project, so that's what we were selected, the total project. That's quite a bit more than that. So our ARPA request for the street and storm only is about 1.2 million. The other option on this is water and sewer that's estimated in there that needs to be replaced, too. That could be included in the ARPA, and then, or we could also put that on the CIP projects for water and sewer, too. So I put both of those options in there. With the water and sanitary sewer, it would be about 1.6 million.
Does that grant have a deadline? Is that something that we need to use?
This, this would be constructed next year.
Okay.
Yep. So all of these projects actually would, would move ahead for next year. None of them would be done this year.
Yeah, so, but the, the grant is open, so if this goes two years, it's still, the money's still available.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
One other question I had is also, does this, would this project, you know, factor in what the, the school district is planning to do over at John Muir? I think they were talking about a new intersection.
They are. What would come out to 17th?
Yeah.
Yeah, Allen's been in touch with them on their project, and we would be able to incorporate anything with them that they're proposing to do as well. I don't know the timing on their project, Michael, so I'm, I'm not really sure, but I know that our design team is actually, you know, in concert and, and discussions with them for what they're proposing, yep.
Any other questions? Sarah?
I guess I had a question for Mary Ann. Is there a recommended, I remember you saying something about like the amount of awards granted to projects? Is there like a recommendation?
We didn't establish any like maximum amount. Again, you could do a partial, this, I haven't checked specifically, but this would be a tax increment District Number Eight, too, so we could, you know, potentially do something where it was partially funded from the district, partially funded from ARPA, and then the LRIP money. Again, you know, it depends also on your sensitivity of a deficit in the district because, you know, the increment is going to grow as we see those apartments, you know, the second set of apartments. That will help with the district's value, but it's not going to be immediate, so there's always that to balance, too.
Any other questions? Nothing? Okay. So I guess we will move forward on rating these projects, and...
And then you have a couple.
We got a couple, yep, we got a couple from Community Development. So I see Tammy's here. She wants to give us a quick overview of those, too.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Eric, so.
He's a little taller than I am. I don't know which one is listed first for you guys.
Oh, I'm trying to get to it. I think it's the...
Homebuyer.
Homebuyer one, yeah.
Homebuyer, okay. This is our smallest request. So we're looking more for the affordable housing aspect of the ARPA funds. Our first one is more of towards homebuyer education. As you know, the housing market out there is pretty crazy. Finding a home are overpriced right now. Closing costs are high, and we want to make sure that our, especially our first-time homebuyers are educated as to what does it mean to be a homebuyer? What are the steps? Let's make them successful and not just jump into something that will put them in, in harm's way later on. So we're just, we're putting together a request saying that if we can get to these first-time homebuyers and get them housing counseling before they write an offer to purchase, we would offer them $500 grant towards the closing costs of buying a home, obviously within the city of Wassa, so we can increase our homeownership percentages and just try to help them out a little bit. And home, and education is the best way to make someone successful.
Okay. Is this the kind of thing, do you, what do you then, do you market this to real estate agents and mortgage brokers?
Absolutely.
So that people know that this program is available, or?
Absolutely. We do have several down payment assistance programs, so we work with local lenders and realtors. They're very familiar with us, but yes, we could get out there and, and promote it that, that much more.
Okay.
Based on the numbers, we're looking at other requests. We're hoping to get about 50 homeowners at the $500. That's quite a few.
Yeah, it is for first-time homeowners. That's, that's, that would be a good, a really, a really good target, so. Any questions on this project? All right, not seeing anything. We can move on to the, the next one.
The next one is more for the rental side. We, you hear all the time that rents in Wassa are extremely high. We know that there's landlords, we always call them the mom and pop landlords out there that aren't renting or charging as much, you know, the $1,200, $1,000, whatever. We know that they're out there, but are their units as desirable as the new ones going up? Probably not, they're older buildings. So this would be a benefit of assistance to make their units, to upgrade their units so that they can compete with the higher paying rents, but with the caveat that they would have to continue to rent lower, at a lower percentage than market rate. On the bottom, I kind of show what HUD says is considered fair market, market rents for one bedroom is 618. We're going to propose that they rent at least a 10% decrease under HUD's proposal, and they change those rents every year. So we would work with those landlords to verify that, yes, they are renting to, keeping the rents low and renting to income qualifying tenants with the caveat that every year that they do that and put in their reports, 10% of the loan, the, the amount of, that we lent them would be forgiven with a maximum of 75,000.
Okay, and so this would be a pretty good incentive for landlords in order to renovate their, their, their units because I'm guessing that they would come out ahead.
Absolutely.
Yeah, with, even with the, with the decrease, you know, in, in the rental rate. After that, after they go through the program, then are they, can they jump up to a mark?
Unfortunately, yeah, we would only have our grips on them for 10 years.
Yeah, so, okay.
But again, a lot of these really, if, if you look at some of these, what they charge for rents are under that. They're just, you don't hear about them as much because they're, they don't have the fancy buildings. They don't hear, you don't hear about what those rents are. So we want to give them a, a help into helping stay afloat, afloat, too.
Okay, okay. Any questions on this? Sarah?
So you say the income qualifying tenants, would that be the 300%?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other? Kara?
And then the properties would be inspected...
Correct.
...to make sure that they're brought up to...
Correct.
...all the code on everything and...
Correct, yeah. What we do right now is we have several programs that we offer landlords and homeowners, and with all of them, we do an inspection on the property. With this program, we would do the same and say, okay, yeah, you might want a roof, you might want some new kitchen cabinets, you might want flooring, but if the electrical's bad, you need to do that. If the, you know, here's your chance to get the plumbing updated, you know, all those other things, we do take a look at those safety items.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing anything, I guess then we will go ahead and rate these, and we'll bring it back to the next Finance Committee meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Next one is on item number five, discussion on possible action regarding budget modification shortfall, Torni Avenue Street project.
Oh, wait, you have one more request.
Oh, do I?
Yes. The Community Partners Campus?
Oh, 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 I'm so sorry, Community Partners Campus, so, right, so. This is, I need something better to kind of, okay, track of these. There were six, I thought there was only five, so go, go, go ahead.
So Randy is not able to be here today. He's at a conference, so I'm going to present on this. Basically, Community Partners Campus, I think a lot of you are aware of it. It's bringing together several nonprofits under one roof in a very accessible area to basically make the access to human, basic human services easier. As you can see in the packet, the, the Community Partners Campus has done significant private fundraising throughout the community, just over $7 million. They have been, you know, they're not exempt from the construction costs and labor costs and new and extra material costs that every other development and construction project is facing right now. So despite their, the fundraising that they've done, and we did receive a, about $1.5 million Neighborhood Investment Fund grant for this program as well, which is incorporated into the fundraising, as well as a $1.5 million line of credit through the CDA also incorporated. They still need, they ended up with a gap of about $162,000. So this ARPA fund request is to help close that gap. This, obviously, nonprofits were significantly affected by COVID. A lot of those fundraising opportunities went by the wayside with, with the pandemic, and operation costs didn't, didn't change at all. And obviously, like I said, construction costs have skyrocketed. So this is an incredibly worthy project for ARPA funds, and this really just helps, like I said, close that construction cost gap. If you have any specific questions, the, I guess, Director and Chair of the Community Partners Campus are here as well, if there's anything I can't answer.
Would there be a potential of this number going down if, with further grants and fundraising?
There is a potential, but it's pretty unlikely, as you can see from the very lengthy list of private foundations. I mean, this is a page in what, size 10 or 11 font? That, you know, the community, the private sector has been pretty heavily tapped for this, so we are really kind of at a gap-filling standpoint where the public sector needs to step in.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Nope, that's, oh, Sarah?
I guess, is there a possibility that we could increase the amount we would give this project? I mean, would it, would that be beneficial to them, or this 162, 756 is very precisely?
This looks pretty precise.
Pretty precise.
That is, that is the bottom line of the game right now. We are actually trying to hold it there and working very closely to, can't get any more.
Yeah, I think this is, this is...
It's like words, Brian.
This, this facility's supposed to open in October, so we're getting towards, this is the end. This, so this is the final push to get to the finish line, I'm, I'm assuming, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. We will rank that and bring it to the next meeting. So thanks, Liz. All right, now we're on to number five, discussion on possible action regarding budget modification shortfall, Torni Avenue Street project. So, who's got some, got some background on that?
Sure, there was a memo in your packet as well. Community Development, their advisory board goes through and establishes a budget for our community development entitlement funds, and every year they try to provide a project that's in a low to moderate income family or neighborhood for public services like streets or street lighting, things like that. So they had targeted Torni Avenue. They had budgeted $200,000. We have not put it out for bid yet, but based on the bids that we've received for our other street projects, they're expecting it will be somewhere between $150,000 and $170,000 over budget, so almost double what they had budgeted initially. Of course, that, again, is due to rising construction costs, as well as with fuel and oil costs going up so much, that plays a big part in these budgets, too. So there's a couple of options. One is they could reprogram some homeowner rehab funds, $100,000 of that, to help fund this project. That still doesn't get them across the finish line, and it does take money away from serving low to moderate income families for housing projects. We could include this in our 2022 debt issuance. The impact of that would be the increased interest of 3% is about $26,000 over that 10 years, and we'd have to pay back the 175,000 as well. We did generate a profit in 2021. You could use those, some of those proceeds to fund this project. It's a one-time project, and that's one-time money, so it would, you know, fit within the guidelines of funding. So those are a couple of options for funding for you. Again, you know, the construction season is short. They were hoping to bid this out in June.
Okay, okay. I know Torni Street is, it's only about a block long, but it is, it is very deficient, so it's in my, it's in my district, so I'm pretty, I'm pretty familiar with the state of condition on that, so.
And these, these funds do help lower the special assessments for... And these, these funds do help lower the special assessments for the families that live on that street, too.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, the community development allocation is important part of our street improvement project for these low to moderate income family house neighborhoods. So, you know, we really appreciate those funds, too.
Yeah, I think there's, there's a Habitat home on that street, and there's, yeah, most of the residents, I would say, are moderate income. So. Sarah?
So is this in like a census tract that would qualify for ARPA funds? Or would this be something that we could use ARPA funds for?
You definitely could use ARPA funds for it if you wanted to. Sure.
Because this, you said the CDA and the council approved this, and it's going to happen this year?
Yes. Good question. So with our, oh, this, the funding will come from 2022 Community Development Block Grant Funds. We just received notification last week, two weeks ago, that our funding is going to be down a little bit. It ends up being like 4% less than what we anticipated. And at the same time, they're putting, engineering's putting projects out for bid, seeing what they're coming back, and went, oh, my gosh, they're so much higher than what we anticipated. So that's where all of a sudden we're going, we've got the shortfall. What are we going to do? So to answer your question, finance and council have not seen our program, the block grant program for this year quite yet, because we didn't know how much money we're truly going to get. We have a proposal of where we want to spend the money through our Citizens Advisory Committee, of which they approve, are recommending the $200,000. But we don't bring the program to you until we know exactly how much money we're receiving. And now, so we're going to put our, our year together now that we know the dollar amount. But if I have to do a public hearing to throw money around, I wanted to find out what you guys thought tonight, so I know how to do my next meeting. How's that for a roundabout answer?
Okay. So I guess the question is, is do, are we going to approve a funding source tonight, or do we just give direction? Or what, where, where are we at with this? So. I mean, you're, you're looking to let bids in, in June, so we almost have to, we, the money has to be there.
Money's got to be there, right, one way or the other.
Yeah. Sarah?
So I can't remember. How much was the profit from 2021?
Oh, it was a little over $1 million.
Okay. And so this is under or over budget by about a?
175.
Yeah, 175.
175.
So could it, and I, I don't really, I don't really want to see us take money from the rehab fund. I think that would be
Yeah.
A bad move. And I don't really want us to borrow. So I don't know. Maybe we can use some of the surplus, the surplus. I guess that would be my vote.
Have we, have we allocated any of the surplus yet?
No.
Oh, okay.
Just a comment. I was thinking the same thing. I wouldn't want to take it out of the homeowner rehabilitation fund. So I, too, was wondering about the profit. And of course, I have no idea how much it is, but yeah, I would rather see that.
So I would move to use $175,000 from our 2021 profit to fund the budget shortfall.
Okay.
And I'll second.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to use the, our, our 2021 surplus funding for the Torni Street Avenue shortfall. Any other discussion? Not seeing anything. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? And that carries.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That'll be nice to see that, that street upgraded. Let's see. Item number six, discussion and possible action regarding State of Wisconsin Waits and Measures Inspection Services.
Yep. And really, this is on the agenda because our procurement says if we have contracts with other government units, you need, they need to be approved. This is an ongoing contract that we've had with the State of Wisconsin. So anything that's measured, weighed, that people purchase gas, avocados, you name it, the, the scales are monitored by the State of Wisconsin to make sure that they are honest and, you know, working as required. And it's, you know, an economical contract for us. If we had to send out our own inspectors for that, we would probably not be as efficient. So my recommendation is that we carry on with this contract, and legal did not have any recommendations for changes to the contract.
Okay. If there's no questions, I'll adjourn a motion. So, all right.
I'll motion then to continue. Let me look here so I do this right. To continue the contract with the State of Wisconsin Waits and Measures Inspection Services.
Right. Second by Watson. So discussion. Not seeing anything. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And it carries. All right. Item number seven, public hearing regarding the 2021 Burn Justice Assistance Grant Program Award and related contract with the Marathon County. So I guess, what do I have to open the public hearing? So we will open the public hearing for the Burn Justice Grant Award Program, if there's anybody that wishes to speak. One more. Anybody wish to speak on the Burn Justice Grant Program? One final call. All right. I'll close the public hearing and on the Burn Justice Grant Program and move on to item number eight, discussion and possible action on inter, inter-local agreement between the City of Wausau and Marathon County for the 2021 Burn Justice Assistance Grant Program Award. And Chief Deputy Barnes, I see you're raring to go here.
Yeah. I see I have four minutes or less to get through this and get you folks to vote. This is an annual thing that comes before this committee and the council. We have a partnership with the Sheriff's Department where they facilitate a grant. It's called the JAG Grant Justice Assistance. It's a different amount of money each year that's given to us to use with some pretty liberal stipulations on it. We have agreed in our, in our computer, our shared forensic computer lab, one of the needs there is very expensive software in dealing with cell phones and locked cell phones, that we allocate these dollars. I think this is the third year in a row. These funds were applied for and approved last year. The money's currently sitting with the federal government right now. They require a public hearing. They require your committee and the council to vote to unlock those dollars to be able to be used to pay that expense.
All right. And you've, I'm, I know in the, in the past, you've brought this in the past years, and you've, you've still found this to be quite useful in, in this, this software in investigations. So.
Yeah. Cell phones are utilized in almost every single investigation that we do now. It's quite a change from, I feel like it makes me old when I started. We weren't a lot, we were given cell phones, but we were told by the city not to use them because they were too expensive. So times have changed.
All right. Sarah?
So it doesn't cover the full cost, right? But Marathon County Sheriff's Office agreed to pay the balance for the $20,000 software?
The, the Sheriff's Department and Department of Justice and the Police Department and our expense and, and the amount of money we pay annually to be part of the forensic computer lab covers the cost of that. And again, this is for last year's purchase of that software. You will probably see something similar that's come through again here in about three months, where we do this all over again, at which point in time, the actual software may change, but with the same intent behind the software.
Okay. Any other discussion? Looks like you're, Sarah, are you ready for a motion, or?
Yeah, I'd move to accept the grant program.
And I'll second.
Okay. Second by Lukens. Discussion. All right. All those in favor of the inter-local agreement between the City of Wausau and Marathon County for the Burn Justice of the Grant Award Program Award, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that carries. And since we're pushing the clock, I think we're gonna, we're gonna
Delay the
Yeah, we're gonna delay the, the, our presentation of the 2021 financial results for the next meeting.
Okay. I'd move to adjourn.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Second by Lukens. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we're adjourned. I'll give us a couple seconds to, or